All right, Mr. President. Let's introduce this to the right of the United States of America and to be welcomed with the riches since one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you.
Commissioner Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner Walter.
Here.
Commissioner Bynne.
Present.
Commissioner Westall.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Allgaier.
Yes.
Chairman Yoder.
Here.
I'll say.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have approval of board minutes. I believe we have six sets of minutes here to approve. Let me write this down for you.
I forwarded no at our last executive meeting, the resolution having to do with this state. And I did provide an explanation. Did you do that?
You don't have to explain.
I know, but I I like to have, when I vote no, I like to have that explanation. That has been too much to say. I I it's first time I think like.
Did you say no at the time and offer an explanation at the time?
Yes.
Okay, so what you would do if you want those minutes corrected, you need to tell me how you would like those corrected.
All right, that's that's fine.
So it is so noted in my opinion.
Okay, yeah, yeah, it was on principle as opposed to.
Is that a motion to approve everything?
Did I say that? I think.
No, you did not.
I approve of the minute as presented.
All right. Is there support? All right. We move to supportive discussion. Not all in favor of approving the minimum minutes. The president say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. One period seven zero. All right, next up, we got approval of the agenda with any late additions or deletions. So pin off it, Mr. Chair.
If I could just add a to a resil, the Steve Stanton resolution wasn't on there. We just put it on so I just read it. We'll make sure it's in the regular reading also.
One.
On the other hand, action. That'd be great. If you do that, that would remember I would. I would I would love to make it.
Four C. Four C. All right. Uh, Mr. Bynne, Commissioner Bynne, and then Commissioner Westall.
Yeah, I I would like to take under the action items two D and have had to have a closed session before we discuss that out here.
So that's just the motion that we'll have when we get to that item.
And and maybe make that, you know, like four D or down here and put it down to close session.
Well, this is a request for a closed session.
Yes.
For what reason?
Well, we'll discuss that.
Yeah.
It's a labor negotiation issue.
Okay, that's fine. I just wonder what it was.
That's right, and two. Uh, two B for internal release.
There. Okay.
Mr. Russell.
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All right, we move to supportive discussion. Not all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We have an agenda. All right, next up, we have communications.
I don't have a specific update for this meeting beyond what was discussed at the. At the executive board meeting. I do have some additional information, though, regarding item. Two. D, it's the two percent allocation regarding Elon Christian neighbors and the food pantry. Food pantry program. And during that discussion, there was some indication that approximately twenty percent of the. Quest was funded about twenty percent of the cost of the food bank program. That the law Christian neighbors. Provides. And. I did receive, actually Dean of Vanderbilt received from. I provided to me information from NMC that approximately twenty seven percent. Year to date of the food pantry. Program is seniors and adults in excess of sixty plus years. So the amount of the program. That is requested to be funding funded by the two percent grant through senior services. Is actually exceeds the amount of services provided to seniors when compared to the full amount of programs. So. You have any questions, I potentially provide that. Provide that at the time. The item is considered. Otherwise, Mr. Chair, I don't have any further. Update for the for the agenda. And you understand that. That our presentation, however, from Northwest Michigan Community Action Agency, which is in the. You were provided with a PowerPoint in the packet. That presenter was, because of a personal emergency, unable to attend tonight. I believe that's still the case. And that if you have any questions regarding that. Present them to me and I can give the answers from. NMC, N M C A A.
I might be able to answer. So much.
Commissioner Bynne.
Yeah, um, so so you're saying senior services gives they know that twenty percent of those people always show up. And that they are all there. They come every Monday or whenever they give out the food.
Yeah, so far year to date, two thousand twenty five, twenty seven percent of those individuals that applied have come to the food pantry. Are adult sixty plus years or older. And in the last twelve months, that has also been twenty twenty six percent. That information came from Todd Shore at at LCN. It was referred to me by Ms. Vanderbilt.
Yeah, and that and so they're they're going by percentages.
Correct.
They're not going by the people they're actually giving it to.
I'm not sure I understand.
Well, I mean, are we gonna make is that we're gonna allow senior services to go by percentages of people? And determining who they give it to.
The point, the point that I think the information. Is intended to provide is that the program actually serves more seniors than the amount of. The amount of funding that is being provided to the program. I I guess I I don't understand your question beyond.
Well, I just didn't know that senior services went by percentages.
He's saying.
I know what he's saying. I just wanna know that. I don't think that that's the proper way to to determine what you give out by percentages. It's just.
I don't know how you can do it otherwise than to is that the, as I understood the question at the executive board meeting. Concern was that. We were funding with money. Or we're funding through the senior services program and program that serve other than seniors. That's what I understood the 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 concern to do. And what we're saying is the program has a certain amount of cost. They're funding about twenty percent of that with the two percent grant through senior services. And it provides twenty seven percent of benefits to seniors rather than to non senior. So I I don't know how else you would make that calculation.
Well, I just don't know that we should be going by percentages. Because you don't know if that shows up every Monday.
Showed up consistently for the last twelve months and consistently year to date.
Those are the people who have signed up. We don't know. They don't check every 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 time they give it out. But everybody here seems to be okay with that except.
I'm just telling you what.
Yes.
The information that you provided to me. They they provided. They provided one hundred and twenty one seniors in two thousand twenty five. And those are identified as having food insecurities, being homebound, or having an acute or chronic illness that prevents them accessing fresh food. That's that's the data that I have. I could I could provide you with the full copy of the email if you. If you insist it would like to, but I'm just summarizing. For your information.
Any other questions for the administrator? All right. Not, we will move on. The public comments. You have three minutes agenda specific. Do you have any numbers? Mr. White.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jim White. I'm from Sutton's Bay. Tonight, you're going to be asked to officially adopt a hiring freeze as noted on the agenda. I want to focus specifically on its impact on the finance department. Earlier this year, an experienced commissioner who has been through several budget cycles in the past said, I quote. The new finance director and her team are doing great, and I am committed to getting them what they need to succeed. Those are the exact words. Yet last week, the same commissioner introduced a freeze that by the county administrator's own admission. Directly affects the finance department and prevents them from restoring an already approved union clerk position. So what has changed? A position that was budgeted, approved, and clearly needed is now suddenly put on hold. And to outside observers, this timing feels odd. I have reason to believe that a finance department employee has filed a grievance against the county commiss administrator. If so, that would be deeply troubling. The appearance would be one of retaliation, effectively freezing only the finance department staffing needs. And risk undermining employee confidence and public trust. The finance department cannot function at full efficiency without its full staff, especially heading into an audit and budget preparation season. So to hobble it now after previously pledging full support undermines both consistency and credibility. I urge you to explain why this freeze is necessary, why the finance department has spared the run of it. And whether the timing is purely coincidental. Transparency matters and the public deserves to know. Thank you.
You have a public comment? All right. Not, we'll move on to official comments. Push comments. All right. Not, we will move along to our consent agenda items. And I was reading a quick statement here. The purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite business by grouping non controversial items together to be dealt with by one motion without discussion. Any commissioner may ask that any item on the consent agenda be removed. And placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected and will not need a second. Does anybody want to remove anything off the consent agenda? All right, I'll take a motion.
I moved the consent agenda to be approved.
Second.
All right, we'll be supported.
Oh, can I just, on the consent agenda, I had our last meeting also requested, suggested that. We look at going out for bids for legal services. I think it's been. Uh, ten fifteen years since we've done that. And as long as we're down this path. At the time, we didn't know, Jim, what the current the contract was as far as when to end it. Think that to do.
Well, we don't have discussions or consent agenda.
We just voted there.
Yeah.
I think you can have discussion anytime, can't you? Our motion?
Can you read the statement again?
Now, the purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite business by grouping non controversial items together to be dealt with by one motion without discussion.
Oh.
So.
How many words I gotta take back?
All right, so go ahead with the roll call.
Commissioner Walter.
Yes.
Commissioner Westall.
Yes.
Commissioner Chairman Yoder.
Yes.
Commissioner Allgaier.
Yes.
Commissioner Bynne.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins. All always.
Thank you.
We're you're pretty moved on. I there was a there was a question regarding item two B. The mitigation system. On motion center. The question was where the source of funds was, and that's a transfer of DTR. If there's any questions regarding what you already approved. Yes, I I believe the finance director is prepared here to address that. Just for just for the record.
All right. Moving on to action item number one, we have the sheriff's office. An update on the marine patrol grant.
Good evening. I'm like this afternoon. I'm not here to ask for any money. As you see in the packet yesterday. About lunch, we got notification from the state. That federal funding related to the marine patrol grant. Came unfrozen, I guess. I don't know. But it showed up. And in June, you approved. A state funding portion of that marine patrol grant for twenty four thousand five fifty. As of yesterday, there is an additional twenty six thousand five fifty available through federal funding as long as it can be approved. Uh, with the appropriate paperwork signed off by the board chair and submitted by me prior to the twenty sixth of this month. Therefore, the expedient nature to get this on today. So. It is for an additional twenty six thousand five fifty for marine patrol grant funding for this year, twenty twenty five.
Have a motion. Mr. Russell.
I recommend that the county board commissioners accept the twenty twenty five marine safety grant amendment dated nine fifteen twenty twenty five in the amount of twenty six thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. I further recommend that the board chair signs the amended agreement and the federal assurances letter so that it can be uploaded into the grant form by the end of the.
Second.
Order discussion. Not all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion period seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Easy enough. Next up, administration to A, four fifty seven plan document change.
Yes, this is a this is comes to us from the Nationwide. Insurance company that manages our four fifty seven B plan. They are adding a actuarial systems corporation as a as a service provider. And that requires a a change in our in our plan documentation. It's been reviewed by the human resources department. And they've determined that the the other than the change of adding. Actuarial, so actuarial assistance corporation to that document that it remains identical to the previous plan document. And they, we we recommended the county board commissioners approve that, sign the plan documents, we need to take the four fifty seven B.
Motion, Mr. Allgaier.
I move to recommend that the county board commissioners sign the plan document. To continue the four five seven retirement plan through Nationwide.
Support. Support. Commissioner Westall, discussion. Not all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Period seven zero. All right, thank you. Next up, we have item number two C, E and W mechanical service agreement.
Yes, that was presented at the the. Presented last week. We're asking just a continuation of the D and W mechanical agreement. Continue the use for three days, actually three and a half days. Year from Gary O'Connor through D and W mechanical. And it's service.
Have a motion.
I move that Leland County Board of Commissioners approve the three year service agreement with D and W mechanics. Cindy's main provided by Gary O'Connor effective one January twenty six through thirty one December twenty eight. That is total contract of amount of four hundred fifty nine thousand two hundred sixty four dollars. And we bid requirements due to sole source nature of dedicated ignition range.
Second.
All right, so we move to supportive discussion.
Yeah, did you, there was that question on the ten hours versus does he.
I think he's he's definitely working well in excess of ten hours. We, I've personally seen him. You know, around the building on the days that he's designated to be here. The disconnect comes from the. He is not employed at the county and is not required to use the Leland system. So all of the, all of the hours that he that he. That he does work for us are not necessarily recorded in that system. That that provided, I believe, a false impression regarding the hours that he worked. They were the hours that may have been. Spent on particular projects that were tracked by other members of the of the. Department that are required to comply with that or use that that system. That's really where. I I I have no doubt that based upon what I see. And the work that Gary performs, he's fulfilling that contract as just for.
Another discussion? All right, not all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Period seven zero. All right, next up, we have item number two D, fall twenty twenty five, two percent allocation intended by the Leland Christian neighbors. Commissioner, Commissioner Russell.
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners allow senior services, Leland Christian neighbors, food pantry. To apply for a two percent allocation for the fall twenty twenty five cycle.
Support it.
Move to supportive discussion. Not all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Thirty six one. Next up, the fall twenty twenty five, two percent allocation intended to provide housing doors. Chairman Allgaier.
I move that Leland County Board of Commissioners allow Housing North. Housing ready, community planning, and housing action strategy information to apply for two percent allocations for the fall. Twenty five cycle.
Sorry. Move to supportive discussion. Bynne.
Yeah, I I just noticed in the paper that they talked about eighty five percent of our requests are going to nonprofits. Eighty five percent of their their property taxes, we're saying we can allow to give to, we're gonna donate to nonprofits. So I just, I just think that that's excessive. And that, you know, things like the A D's pads and other things, we're neglecting and not asking for those to be paid for. But we're asking for us to donate the the taxes, the property taxes for the casino to go to nonprofits. And I don't understand why we continue to do this.
Oh, yes. The uh. The last Housing North contract, we never did get a report as we were supposed to. Well, I I I hopefully there, I mean, I'm not sure why we didn't get a report, but that was also through two percent. And I'm trying, and my comment to Housing North is please give us a report and and follow through on that. But my question is, now we have a new policy that that we approved. Is there a requirement in that policy to also provide a. A report at the end? I can't remember it, to be honest.
It was my suggestion that you require that, but you chose not to do so. Or chose to excise that portion from the suggested policy.
You have discussion? All right, not all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Period five two. All right. Finance three A, addendum to opioid funds management agreement of twenty twenty five.
Yes, um, last week, we spoke about needing an addendum to the existing contract with Leland County Family Coordinating Council. Cole Stoker was able to produce that document in time for you to consider it tonight for approval.
Mr. Allgaier.
Leland County Board of Commissioners moves to approve the amendment to the terms of the county use of opioid funding. Funds funding and management agreement between Leland County and Leland County Family Coordinating. Council for budget year twenty twenty five to the regular meeting of September sixteen, twenty twenty two. I think promotion ended at the word twenty twenty five.
It, that's what it says.
I just typed in last week's thing.
And the motion, the motion on the E D S just finishes with and authorize the chairman of the board to sign saying.
Okay.
All right. Is there support for that? Support by Commissioner Russell? Discussion.
Always me.
All right, go for it.
Well, well, I I'd like to know where all this money, where this money goes. I won't say all this money, but. It is a sizable chunk of money. And I I looked at our last contract and it had an amendment. Addendum. Appendix whatever A, and that had an actual budget in it on where this money was supposed to be spent. And this one doesn't have that. It just says we're gonna spend it for the same things. And I don't. I think that when you have a program like that, every year you should evaluate how that money's spent. And you should be able to report to us, which that contract allowed us to require them to. How that the money actually went to the the specific areas that it was supposed to go to. And this particular contract has less. Uh, has less uh, of those types of requirements in it. And and I mean, I'm not suggesting that anything was done wrong. I'm not saying that at all. I just believe the funds helped. And I do believe that the funds helped a lot of kids in Leland County. But I believe we have to tighten up our reporting and oversight. And we can't do that without the help of our partners. So I would like to suggest an addendum of the contract, which would say. Recipient will be required to provide a financial and narrative report. By November first, two thousand twenty five, explaining how funds from opioid settlements were spent in two thousand twenty four. In comparison to the estimated budget included in the two thousand twenty four contract. Also, recipient will provide by February first, two thousand twenty six. A financial and narrative report showing how funds for two thousand twenty five were spent. In comparison to the two thousand twenty four budget, which was carried over to the two thousand twenty five calendar fiscal year.
All right. That was an.
Did I have that written down?
Okay, then that was made that motion. It was supportive. Discussion on the amendment.
I.
Russell.
I, I don't, I don't have a problem with the, with the amendment, I think that's probably good practice. I, I will say that Sharon Vreeland and the LEP group both came in and reported late last year on what they were doing with the, with the funds. But it's probably time this board hears it.
Thank you. Alright. I'd like to add, just so you know, there's very, very strict guidelines on the use of these substance funds. Substance funds are highly, highly, so I just want you to know that.
Just looking for accountability on that.
Yeah, and it's used by professionals.
Yeah, sure. Alright, any other discussion on the amendment?
Chairman? If I, I believe that Sharon Vreeland is on your budget workshop presentation, October twenty-first, I believe Lauren shared with me. So you will be seeing her October twenty-first.
And I am hoping that we are done by that date, because I said I will be out of town, and I was promised we would be done by then.
Alright. Any other discussion on that amendment?
When not, we need to change this schedule.
Alright, all, all is in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay? Motion period, seven zero. Alright, now back to the original motion, discussion on the original motion. Not all in favor of the original motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay? Motion period, seven zero. Alright, thank you. Next up, we have the, MIDC grant acceptance fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Yes, and I believe we're going to have a Zoom presentation by Paul Jarboe and Katie of Jarboe and Field. And Lauren will be bringing them up shortly to give us an update as to the MIDC commission meeting on the twelfth.
Good evening. You able to hear us?
Paul, Katie?
I can hear you, Paul, can you hear them?
There we go, I can hear everybody, now I can see everybody.
I, I can hear anything.
Can you hear us now? I can hear Katie.
No, I can't hear anything.
We're not muted, Katie, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yeah.
Yeah.
Lauren, Lauren's in control from her end, and I'm not sure, they could hear us, I'm not sure, but we're having audio.
But they can hear us, so.
Oh, he can hear us.
Is there, is there anything, you can turn the volume up there?
Okay, we can hear you just fine, and Katie can hear me.
Jen?
Let us know if you can hear us. Anything now?
Again, Paul.
Anything now, can you hear us?
There we go.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, well, hi, everybody, thanks, thanks for having us, we're sorry we're not there in person. Katie's at home taking care of her home stuff, and I'm actually running a meeting down at the Old Town Playhouse. Well, I'm the president of this board, so we've taken a break from that. Just as a promotion, we're showing Sister Act for the next three weekends, so please buy your tickets and come see us. We just wanted to give you a brief update about MIDC. And Katie Richard is our program manager, who really is in charge of the finances of MIDC and monitors the actions down in Lansing. Katie and I had an opportunity to observe the MIDC commission meeting shortly ago. And Katie, why don't you fill them in on what happened and what we're anticipating moving forward for Leland County, please?
Sure, so at the commission meeting, they authorized an amendment to our current contract. Our current contract ends September thirtieth, but they've approved an amendment to extend that beyond September thirtieth, given that none of the contracts have been authorized, given there is not a state budget. Once they have a finalized state budget, they will be signing contracts and able to distribute money. So until then, they have authorized this amendment to allow us to continue on with our fiscal year twenty-five funds and rates. So we are, we don't have a contract yet, but we are being told that we will have a contract. The next commission meeting is October twenty-first, I believe. And they anticipate that all contracts will be approved then, and the grants will be sent out the following week for signature. So we are just prepared to continue forward through, you know, after September thirtieth, after the current contract is done, continue with our fiscal year twenty-five rates, use any unexpended funds from fiscal year twenty-five as we begin fiscal year twenty-six, which was the direction of MIDC, given that no grant funds have been distributed yet.
So to supplement Katie's report, there are a total of a hundred and twenty systems underneath the MIDC umbrella, and Leland County is one of those. At this point, only forty of the one hundred and twenty systems proposed compliance plans and budget have been approved by the state commission, though literally two-thirds have not. And in asking why, the answer we got is because they basically stopped approving them until they know they've got the money available through the state budget. As far as Leland County's plan is concerned, it's been approved by our office. It reviewed, prepared and approved by our office, it's been approved by the MIDC regional manager. It's been reviewed and approved by the senior regional manager. And now it's simply waiting final approval by MIDC senior staff. We're confident it will be approved. The numbers that are in the proposed cost analysis, which I think may have been shared in last week's material, we're confident those will be approved. The important thing for the board to know is that the local share, which is what the county actually has to contribute to its indigent defense program, has not increased at all and will not increase. In fact, I think, if I remember, it actually went down a little bit this year. But, so we're, we're somewhat delayed simply because of the delay in the state budget, just like the educational departments, just like, you know, every other department that's partially or fully funded by the state of Michigan. We're confident it's all gonna work out, but we don't have the final paperwork to present to you. You know, Katie has shared the dates of the October meeting. We're, we've been told that all of the remaining eighty plans will be on the calendar for approval, and that contracts will be sent out the following week with funding immediately thereafter. Happy to answer any questions if we can, but I think at this part, you as a board pretty much know everything we know.
Russell?
Well, the, and thank you for being here. Sixty thousand, I think that's up from last year, isn't it?
I think it went up twenty, yeah, Ty, I think it went up twenty-five hundred bucks is what we had proposed.
And what's that, what, how do you calculate that? Is it number of clients you anticipate, number of hours?
Well, Katie, and I think there had been a question, Ty, that you had last week about the number of cases or defendants, because we're really not, they're not clients of MIDC, they're clients of the individual attorney. So Katie, I think it shared some numbers, do you have those, Katie?
I do, so as of last week, for fiscal year twenty-five, we had a hundred and seventy cases serving a hundred and forty-five different defendants.
Well, that's, that, that gives you an idea of the amount, the volume of work that the private attorneys are doing and are being paid through the state MIDC funds. The sixty thousand that we have proposed, I think is up, like I said, maybe twenty-five hundred bucks, covers all the work that my office does, that Katie does, that I do for your county. And so it's everything, including the daily assignment of cases, the providing attorneys for arraignment purposes on a weekly, if not more often, basis. The, the management of the, of the case information system that we have, the preparation of the quarterly reports with the assistance of your finance department, the preparation and filing and monitoring of the compliance plans that we file for this, with the state of Michigan every year. So it's, it's, that's simply the, the cost for us to do what we do to manage this program on your behalf. Your, again, the, from a out-of-pocket standpoint for the, for the system, the local system, in this case, Leland County, and the same is true with Antrim County and Grand Travers County, that we do the same services for. The local shares have not changed, your dollar's out-of-pocket. To fund your share of an indigent defense program has not increased over the years since we started this program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, we have a motion.
Well, that's the thing, should we wait until October? Paul and Katie, that's the recommendation that we wait to.
Yeah, I don't, there's, I mean, I, we're pretty confident that what we've provided to you folks will be the final picture, but, you know, you never say never, and it, we have no problem continuing under the resolution that the MIDC commission voted on to allow us to continue our work based upon the fiscal twenty-five plan. Or it would be our recommendation that this get tabled, not only the approval of the submitted plan, but also our independent contractor agreement with the county, and we just bring them up when, when they're in final form. We won't stop doing our work, the attorneys won't stop doing their work. There will be funds available to pay for a while, obviously, if this were to go on three or four months, we'd be having a different discussion. But we're hopeful that doesn't happen.
Or let's move this to, move this to the October.
Actually, to November, because they're not using the October.
It's after, and we're early in October.
Let's move to.
November, okay? Support? supportive discussion?
Does that work?
Will that work?
November?
Yeah, what is your date in November?
November fifteenth. November fifteenth?
Sure, you'll, i- if it goes according to what we're told the plan will be, you'll have everything ready to go well before then, and that's fine.
Thank you. Any other, any other discussion on that? Alright, if not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay? Motion period, seven zero. Thank you, Paul, thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the work you folks are doing, we appreciate working with you.
Thank you, good evening. So does that mean contract as well? Generally, that gets tabled too, then? Alright, so do you have a motion specifically on that to table that to November as well, I guess? And three C, MIDC, MACC contract with Jarboe.
I thought that motion was off very.
Oh, was it? I don't.
They were talking about it interchangeably.
Okay, was that your understanding, Commissioner Money?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Alright, next up, we have item number four A, hiring freeze brought up by Commissioner Robbins.
I recommend that Leland County Board of Commissioners adopt by appropriate resolution, attempt to try and freeze until such time as of two thousand twenty-six budget has been approved, or the commissioners will not approve positions, or no, no positions authorized in the twenty-five budget, but currently they can maybe fill unless appropriate, an elected official or detached staff, and the county administrator agrees a written report, position is essential to continue the existing level service.
Or? Alright, so we move to supportive discussion, Commissioner Money?
Yeah, I'd like to amend that with, with, just put the exception in for the, the finance department. We already know that that's good, and that I think we heard from, from the public, and I think that we need to reconsider that. Except that is the exception.
I think it says it, motion.
Is there support for that amendment?
I would support that amendment.
Alright, so now we can have a discussion on that amendment. Mr. Algar?
You know, I was initially concerned about that, but the motion does state, all the person has to do is discuss it with the administrator. And his report can be in one of his weekly reports, so we don't have to wait till September or October. So I'm, I'm fine with the original motion, because I, we have to work with our administrator. So I will not vote for you.
If you want to.
My concern is, we've already filled positions this week in other departments. Correct, and Sheriff just said he hired somebody.
Mike, or Kim? He was actually hired July fourth, he started yesterday.
Okay.
He has been on the books and hired, ready to go since the early part of July.
Alright. Are you done?
I guess, I mean, we, yes, so yes, I vote for that.
Alright, Commissioner Russell?
Well, I, I, I support the original motion, because I, obviously staff are most valuable asset, but it's always good practice when you have a vacancy to have our administrator and the department head sit down and say, is that the best use of these county funds at this time? And I think this motion allows that to happen. And I think it's good practice to have it happen, and I think it's always good practice to have our administrator involved in a hiring decision. And, and so I, I will not support the amendment, but I will support the, the original motion.
Alright, Commissioner Money?
Yeah, I mean, Abby's talked about, you know, training these people, and that they're doing, she and I think it's Mike are doing double duty, because they're missing the person in their, their office.
Call the question.
I think it's very important that, that we do, that we do allow this to happen and encourage it, so.
Okay, I had another question too, so.
I'd like to comment too.
I don't want everybody to speak here, so.
So, so I'm just saying that I, I just, that's why I, I made a motion, is I think we need to, to, to be aware of that, and, and we're gonna have an audit coming up here next year, and that person, are they gonna be in training at that time? If we don't get it in place.
Yeah, Mel?
Yeah, it was. I was brought up at, at the, as the discussion ensued, because I had talked about a hiring freeze. If you look at the context and what I said, I was referring to the two thousand twenty-six budget, not the current budget. I didn't, had not done any homework, and I, I had no way to know what, how a freeze might affect the function of county government. And while wording of the motion describes a two or three-month hiring freeze throughout county government, it's very obvious that this is affected at, and directed at just one department. Nobody else is, it's, it's, that's the department that has someone they want to hire. At last, at the last meeting, you had said, with the exception of the, of the accounting, of the finance department, I agreed with you at that, at that time, I think that that should be an exception. And, and it was also discussed by my colleagues how important finance, the changes in the finance department are coming up with a new accounting system. I would like to see us be much more transparent as far as our finances, and to do that. And to do that, you have to hire someone. You have to have a full staff there to do it. Um, and we have a reason not to institute a hiring freeze directed at the finance department. And that is the thing we're not talking about, a personnel complaint that was filed. With that in mind, I, I, and there's no benefit to it, uh, other than it, no benefit throughout county government to it, and I'm afraid it comes back at us depending on the outcome of that, of that, uh, of that issue. So I, I see a big possible downside to, to passing this, and I see absolutely no upside to passing this, unless we have made a decision that the finance department should only have three employees. If we decide that, that's fine, but otherwise, this doesn't, this is not a good look.
Mr. Westall, then I'll close it out.
Well, I, I heard Commissioner Campbell talk about transparency, so I'll be transparent. The way, the reason I support this is I, I've been on the board for 11 years. I have never heard of a position being filled with the administrator not knowing about it until he saw a paper that was handed him, said, I want to hire this person. And the administrator must be involved, must, must support the, the positions when they're hired, and that's standard practice of any organization I've been.
So it was the, the process that, it's a process that, that, um, that you're getting at.
Alright, so one question I have for you, Commissioner Bunny, is what part of this motion does not satisfy your amendment?
What part doesn't? Just that we're, we're gonna have a freeze on, on, basically, on the finance department. So I'm just saying that I don't want that to be a freeze on, of any kind.
Okay, 'cause I don't read this as a, as a, it's not gonna happen. I read it as a temporary pause where it gets a review type of thing. I don't read, I don't read that motion as that, so that's, I guess, why I'm, I'm a big concern of that, so. Alright. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Alright, fails three to four. Alright, so now we're back to the original motion. Any discussion on the original motion? Alright, if not, all in favor of the original motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carried four, three. Alright, next up, we are to item 4B, resolution opposing MDHHS competitor to employment process brought to us by Commissioner Westall.
The, uh, we, we had a resolution from, uh, 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 another county, um, asking the state legislature not to support, uh, privatization of the community mental health system going out for bids. Uh, I presented, I presented the rationale last week, but, uh, certainly the people most impacted by that will be the people that are least paid with the four, that's the people that don't have insurance. Um, it also takes our board and community mental health board out of the process of supervising those programs. So we lose local control. And I believe it's important that, uh, we, uh, we support this for our county's presidents. Our county presidents deserve that, uh, they have a community health system based upon, uh, best practice and not, uh, private. I hope you'll support the resolution.
Is there a motion?
I move to support the resolution as presented last week and included in last week's, uh, workbook.
Support.
Alright, it's been moved and supported. Discussion?
I didn't bring another copy. It's, uh, it's in last week's workbook.
Yeah, I didn't bring that. Pack it with me.
I could find it, but read it if you want me to.
If you, if you take a break, I can go to the office and print it out.
Probably a good idea. I hate to vote on something that we haven't double-checked and read again.
Alright, we'll take it quick. You, you need two minutes, Roger. I saw your post here there.
That's right.
That needs to come around soon.
It is.
Just came off. Oh, have each one of those last, okay, I think. I didn't, there was no other choice.
I don't know.
Yeah, we barely got in the church. Yeah, it was where the first, but we got in the front row, where the first one down. And Russell's, that was probably another day, a lot of stuff. We were in the back. Yeah. That's a good idea. I, I, that's all I'm saying is that, that's why I said.
I'm good, no.
Alright.
You know, I just don't feel comfortable voting on something I don't handle.
Understand, so we're ready for you. Good? Alright, we're back in session. We have a motion. And we have support, discussion on that motion.
Yes, I'm going to vote no, but not because of anything that was said by my colleague, Mr. Westall. I agree with everything he said. I just don't think, uh, resolutions of, of those types are, uh, should be handled at, by this body.
Bunny?
Yeah, I, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Campbell. I also am already receiving, um, other resolutions that people want me to present. If we're gonna do these, then we're gonna start doing resolutions. So I will vote no as well.
Okay, any other discussion? Alright, if not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Right.
Oh.
Which was all called.
I bet.
Yeah, motion was by Commissioner Westall, correct?
Yeah, and you, and you got the comments by Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah.
They got that in minutes now.
Uh, Commissioner Westall?
Yes.
Jeremy Yoder?
Yes.
Mr. Hallgar?
Yes.
Mr. Bunny?
No.
Commissioner Campbell?
No.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Five for two.
Alright, next up, we have, uh, amended to the agenda for C, Steve Stanton Resolution brought to us by Commissioner Campbell.
Uh, yeah, I would like to move to recognize with appreciation Steve Stanton for his many years of service on the Veterans Affairs Administrative Committee, as well as gratitude for his military service to his country while serving in Vietnam during the Vietnam War.
Alright, it's the move and supported. Commissioner Westall? Discussion?
We will miss his contributions to the county.
Sergeant Will? Alright, that was by resolution, from my understanding. Commissioner Campbell?
I needed a motion.
This is a motion, okay. Alright, all is in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried seven zero. Alright, Hugh, next up, we have, we moved down, which was originally to be, which will, or lease settlement, that was Commissioner Bunny wanted to do a closed session. Bunny?
Yeah, I would, I would like us to do that after public comment, do a, a view of financial special report, public comment, and then um, have our, our closed session. But that will be okay.
Bunny? Yep. So with that, we'll move to review financials.
I don't believe there's any invoices that we need to question, um, or bring to your attention. There were lately, that was put on the dais this evening. Um, just a few late bills that we wanted to get paid in this month. Does anyone have any questions on invoices? Okay.
All good.
Okay, staff report?
Yep, go for it.
Okay, I would just like to, um, maybe shed some light on some misinformation. Um, shortly after Administrator Dyer was hired, we did talk about the opening in my office. And, um, that the search was on with posting to Indeed and, um, the posting downstairs, it's a teamster position that's required. I did receive no less than probably 15 applications over the period of the summer and interviewed a few people. And, um, Commissioner, Administrator Dyer and I did speak about the position in that he was wondering, just with time clock coming on, would that maybe reduce the responsibilities of that desk? And he asked if perhaps there would be a, a opportunity for the county to explore an additional, uh, communications director. Um, and I, I reviewed, I thought about that for a while, but I know the time clock plus will require mapping. Plus, at the time, my clerk also, uh, my existing clerk did, expressed a desire to expand her knowledge of the department to help with cross-training and move from AP to payroll. So then my focus of a clerk in the, uh, process, clerk, um, hiring process shifted to more of a person with AP, yeah, direction. So, um, there was a point during the summer where we weren't getting quality applicants, so HR came to me and asked me if I should take down my posting for a brief time and put it back up on Indeed. I guess that's a strategy that HR managers use to refresh it in the world of interest, and we got some more applications. And, um, I, I interviewed one individual by phone and, um, pulled HR in on an interview in person. And that's the person that I felt would be, um, a candidate to offer the position to. In the past, um, under different administrators, the director, myself included, was, um, allowed to write my own offer letters, which I did for my current hires. And so I did draft the offer letter to, um, this candidate, took it to HR for her review, and she told me that, oh gosh, um, Administrator Dyer would prefer to write offer letters. And I, I said, oh, I'm sorry, I did not know. That is fine. It, this is fine. This is what, you know, we're going to look at offering this individual. And she drafted the letter, had me proof it, and gave it to Administrator Dyer on Thursday prior to, um, Labor Day. And that also was just shortly after the workshop on August Tuesday, before Labor Day, where you made the comments, Mr., or Commissioner Campbell, about the freeze, and then Jim and I had a discussion about what I heard and what he heard. And that I felt it was more directed to expanded workforce, expanded hours, expanding for the 26th round, but my position that we have open is approved and budgeted both in 25 and 26. And here we are now. I just thought you'd like some background on the information. I just thought you'd like some background on the information to help you understand that process. Thank you.
It's so important. Yep. Since we are going in this direction, let me give you an enlightenment on what I have regarding this position. First of all, when I, early on in my time here, the Finance Director actually came to me and suggested that because we were going to implement time clock, it may not be necessary to fill that fourth position. She told me it may not be necessary. And I said, that's interesting. Because if that's the case, that money could potentially be used elsewhere. I didn't hear anything about that for approximately three weeks. And then I went to her and said, what's the status of that position? And I was told, I think I'm going to be hiring. I said, fine, if that's the way you want to go, that's what we're going to do. I heard nothing about that position from that day until the day that I was handed an offer letter. And Finance Director is absolutely correct. That occurred after there was a suggestion from several county commissioners to me that they wanted to implement the hiring freeze. Only why? And I indicated to the, first of all, it's interesting that that offer letter was not presented to me. The fact that the position was posted again after having been removed from the posting was never presented to me as a possibility. It's completely in the dark as to whether that position is going to be filled or not. I'm handed an offer letter and I said, I think there's a interest on the part of numerous commissioners to have a hiring freeze. Not my idea. Commissioner idea. And I said, in light of that, wouldn't it be a better idea to wait and see what the, what the commission would do? It was presented by a commissioner. At your last meeting, you voted in favor of that. You would think that when, when that, that item has a provision that says unless approved by the, in a report from the administrator, you would think that if it was so essential, that position be immediately filled, that the department head would have come to me the next day and discuss why that position was essential. That has yet to happen. Instead, individuals in this building have attempted to build a political case for whether that position should be filled by the board rather than by me. You hired me as your chief administrative officer. I'm responsible for hiring and firing of those below the administrator level. And instead, this has been turned into a political issue to assert power and to attempt to reduce the ability of the administrator to actually do his job. And this is not the first time. This is just another example of how business is done here. You've had reports from, before I even darkened the door of Leland County that says there are people in this building that are obstructive, that refuse to consider alternatives to what's been done in the past. And frankly, you get the government that you deserve when that happens. Thank you.
That will move on to public comment.
Yes.
Good evening, Commissioners. Why, dealing with humans, always interesting, isn't it? And so one of the reasons I'm here tonight, Dana Getzinger, Elmwood Township, is because I was in Cedar the other day at the Polish food truck. And I was talking to Tom, the young man who owns the food truck. And if you haven't been there, I really recommend it. But, you know, I was, it was great to hear his passion for his farming and what he does and, you know, how, how they fit into the community. And while he was there, he was saying he was really upset with what's going on right now in the political climate in the county. And how, he said, you know, we should just, no matter what religion you are, you know, people came to this country for freedom of religion. It doesn't mean one religion is better than the other, that we should acknowledge each other's religion and acknowledge each other as neighbors, not as enemies. And while I was speaking with him, there was a, another, both of these people were at least half my age, another young woman there saying she was frightened. She was frightened about what's happening in the county and she wasn't sure that we wouldn't have shootings in this county. So I thought about it and I thought, you know, we do live in paradise. We all, everybody who lives here knows that. And I'd like to make sure we keep it that way. So I thought, and I don't expect you to do exactly what I say. I know this is public comment. But so I, I wrote a letter to Steve and this is what I said. Excuse me, Chairman Yoder. Dear Chairman Yoder, I'm concerned about the identity politics that seem to be taking over our country and our county. I'm hoping that the Board of Commissioners would adopt a resolution of unity for all of our neighbors in Leland. Here's an example of such a resolution. A resolution for peace, safety, and mutual respect in Leland County. Whereas the people of Leland County value the safety, well-being, and dignity of all who live, work, and visit here. And whereas violence in any form, whether physical, verbal, or psychological, undermines the fabric of community life and erodes trust between neighbors. And whereas the citizens of Leland County affirm that all people, regardless of background, belief, or opinion, are entitled to protection from violence and intimidation. And whereas mutual respect for differing perspective is essential to preserving a healthy democracy and to fostering the spirit of cooperation in our county. And whereas Leland County recognized that our greatest strength, oops, shoot, sorry. My. Shoot. Our greatest strength lies in treating one another as neighbors committed to living in peace and working together for the common good. Now therefore be it resolved that Leland County affirms its commitment to a community free from violence and intimidation. And be it further resolved that Leland County encourages all residents to respect differences of opinion, to engage in civil discourse, and to uphold the dignity of every individual. And be it finally resolved that Leland County calls upon all who live here to regard each other as neighbors deserving of safety, compassion, and mutual respect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So Lois Bailey, Village of Suttonspade. Leland Energy is sponsoring an event called Sunday. It's on nine twenty-one, this Sunday. It's a national event. Bill McKibben is involved. If you're an old energy nerd like I am, you know, Bill McKibben from the seventies and eighties talking about renewable energy, which is now our, our primary source of energy. It's the cheapest. Solar, wind, and batteries are our cheapest and cleanest way to power our world. We're building record numbers of solar farms in different areas of the world that we need to keep up. So come to the movie at the Bay Theater, one o'clock. Join me, join the discussion. Thank you.
Yes.
Steve Tostage from Soulland Township. Commissioners, our own Leland County personnel policy shows the problem clearly. If an employee complaint is not resolved at step one, it escalates to the county administrator for investigation or response. But what happens when the complaint is about the administrator himself? By design, the process puts the very subject of the complaint in charge of investigating it. This is an untenable conflict. It appears that under county personnel policies, a grievance has already triggered outside council involvement. That likely means an investigation is underway. Typically, such reviews are narrow, limited to the filer and listed witnesses. But the board could broaden the scope to all the administrators' direct reports. If you did, you might hear similar concerns from others if they feel safe to speak. Now, consider the timing. At your September ninth meeting, Commissioner Robbins introduced a hiring freeze. The Finance Director explained on the record that she urgently needed to restore a budgeted union clerk. Yet the freeze was pushed forward anyways. The administrator himself confirmed finance was one of only two departments directly affected. From the outside, that looks less like a neutral budget tool and more like pressure. Maybe it's a coincidence, but appearances matter, especially when staff already fear retaliation or the loss of benefit if they speak openly. Cass County offers a model. Just last month, when their administrator faced workplace allegations, the Cass Board placed him on paid administrative leave while outside council investigated. Council reported directly to the board, not to the administrator. The process concluded with a unanimous vote to terminate for cause. Here in Leland, in Leland, employer confidence depends on commissioners ensuring the same firewall. That means directing outside council to report to the board only, not to the administrator, excluding the administrator from any role in the process. Affirming that retaliation, including subtle acts like blocking a hire or altering workloads, will not be tolerated. The board alone has the duty and authority to ensure a fair process. Employees are watching. Your decision will signal whether Leland County values integrity and accountability in its leadership. Thank you.
Yes, Straskey?
Good evening. We are here for something that was omitted or appears to be intentionally omitted at every executive committee meeting. And that is to again request, after many months, an apology resolution as required due to the May eleventh, twenty twenty-one Board of Commissioners clerk loathing motion. Without a plan, no discussion with clerk, no need necessity or justification or benefit report. That clerk loathing decision removed all financial, human resources, responsibilities immediately from the clerk's office. It's harmed the clerk, financial staff, and wasted nearly a million dollars of taxpayers' money. And obviously caused chaos among employees in this building. It's still ongoing. It has caused difficulty to prepare audits that will pass muster. Again, we respectfully request this resolution at your earliest time. If you need help preparing one, I can, we can help you. It's critical that this commission do so, wants to salvage some of its twenty twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-four, and present commission credibility. On another matter, we talk about senior citizens, but I, I'm trying to understand this. When we talk about senior citizens and benefits to senior citizens, are we talking people over sixty-five and older? Or are we talking about another group of people? And also, are we always talking about means-tested people who get benefits? That seems to be left out of the whole process. The justification, means testing, and ages are left out of the process. And it's very confusing to ordinary people to understand what that means because you commissioners can do a lot of money any way you want to after you extract it from us under threat of dire consequences. Another thing. The tribal benefits that come from the tribe, in my mind, are pilt. Payment in lieu of taxes. I read the legal documents that specify what those funds should be used for. And very soon, if this board continues on its way, we will not have any of that money ever come for any use in Leland County. It'll be all given to somebody else, some other organizations, and nothing to serve and help the county with its finances. Finally, I'm very confused and perplexed about this, this issue of, of hiring. Seems to me that I, in attending meetings, that the decision to hire a staff member for the Finance Department was all final and done. And all of a sudden, it gets pulled from the table. I guess we have the most, most qualified Finance Department now ever we've ever had. And it's perfect. And so we can go without an employee if it was needed. Now, if it wasn't, wasn't needed, then we made a mistake and this commission made a mistake in approving it. So it's, it's, I'm beginning to wonder, are we inviting and sending an invitation to the Finance Director to leave? I'm not sure. Are we doing that? It's very confusing to me. So someone has to put together some kind of document, you people here, to tell us what's going on. Thank you.
Hi, Kate Allen, Cleveland Township. I just wanted to say thank you for all that you do for our county. And basically, just ditto to what Sam Getzinger said about a statement of unity. I do think there's a lot of fear and fear mongering that's going on. And I think it would be powerful to make a statement of unity. And just that violence event isn't tolerated in our, in our community. Thank you.
Sheriff?
Good evening, obviously the undersheriff and also a township of Leland. I just wanted to make a clarification based, basically, on the budget session this afternoon. There was comments that came up at that point and at other meetings that we, we are a very safe county. And at least from my personal opinion, there were connotations that maybe the sheriff's office is overstaffed. We are budgeted for twenty-one people from the sheriff town, currently staffed by seventeen. I'm not even going to get into hiring freeze. I am fine with it. If that's what you choose, that's what we will do. My point is, is the national average is one officer for every thousand people in the population of the jurisdiction. We are twenty-one. That would be twenty-one thousand people. The census for twenty twenty-four showed our population at roughly twenty-two, five. And you forget, six months out of the year, we are probably sixty to eighty thousand. So I personally, the administration, and several deputies take offense to the fact that we would be perceived as overstaffed. We are in a unique position. We are in a unique county. We are two different agencies. Six months out of the year, I can fall for that argument. There are times we are tripping over each other. In the summer, maybe even more, from March to November now, we get our heinies kicked and we are not staffed where we should be. We have been understaffed for probably close to a year now, for lots of reasons that you're all aware of, housing. Based on that same census, the median average income in this county is ninety-one thousand dollars and change. One person in the sheriff's office makes that on base salary and that's the sheriff. I don't even make that. So, thank you.
In the public comment? Yes.
Hello, Weisner, Elmwood Township. And the handout.
And the handout that I gave you is, basically, it's a transcript of this talk, it's in the front picture there. And it's the Adam Carolla Show. And he's got two computer computer expert on the fraud that's going on. And so it's very interesting talk. There's a lot in there. And I've transcribed it with my auditor.ai. It's not perfect, but it's pretty good. And it's online. The county was very good about getting it up right away, about within a half hour when I sent it over today. So it's up online right now. And that's the number two. Obviously, you guys know how to get there, but that kind of shows the path to get to these more items, and it's under my name or Steve's name or whoever puts something in. It's really a nice feature that we can put stuff there. So that's, you only get two pages, but the other 43 are online right now. And it's just a transcript. And if you look at number three there, that is something I'm going to play on the, on the phone here in just a little bit. Let's move on to the back page, though. It's talking about this book, Stolen, Stolen Elections. And it's got a link to it. I bought the book and I've got it on Kindle also. And just one review here by one of the guys that's in the movie, Gary Bernstein. "The story of a complex and vicious attack on the underpinnings of American and global democracy. Stolen elections need to be read by all those who value free." So it's, it's a pretty nice to read. The charts are a little bit small in here, so you can't quite read them all. But the rest is real readable. And the Kindle version, you can enlarge the charts. There's quite a few charts in this thing. The point two is whistleblower. It's going down on the second page. That's already on my website. And I put that up just before the election in November. And it's a, it's of the 48-page article. It's at the top of tcfamily.org. It's 12 pages from pages 17 to 28. And it's excellent material there. That's all the actual transcription, not that I did. It's perfect. And there's so much in there. And there's a video to go along with it. It's only 16 minutes long, so start there. And then also the stolenelectionfacts.com has a whole lot on the computer fraud out of Venezuela. And this guy's an expert there. He was a head of like DOJ, FBI, DEA, and DHS in Latin America. So he knows Venezuela. And that's where it all started from. Here's the, see if I can play this now. Sure, this is on. Yep. Here we go.
So in terms of the election, I feel, and I don't know anything about how stuff works. You guys do, so we'll get into that. But for me, as a citizen and a layperson, when you bring up a subject, you go like, you go, okay, the border. I want a stout border. And then you go to the Republicans and you go, you want a stout border? And they go, yeah, we want to build a wall. And we want to put the army there. You go, oh, okay. Democrats, what do you want? We want a stout border too. Oh, okay. So you want to build a wall? No, no wall. Walls never stopped anyone from going anywhere. Right? Go, well, there's a wall around your house and there's one around every prison. But all right, but so you don't want a wall? No. But you, you do want a secure and stout border, right? Yeah. Well, then how about putting the troops on the border? No, no, we're not, we're not doing that either. And you're like, well, then what are you doing? Well, we've anointed Kamala Harris to be the borders are. Oh, okay. Where's she? At the border? No, she's not at the border. She hasn't been at the border. I go, well, okay, I'm starting to think that maybe this is, well, it's not job one. And you go, yeah, it is. That's what we want. And then I go, they go, we want secure elections. You go, oh, good. So you're for ID then, right? No, no, we're not. And you go, okay. And then, well, you want election debt? No, we'll do it over the month. We'll mail it in. And it's the same with the board. I'm going, well, maybe you're not as into this as you're saying you are. So that's just where I land. It doesn't mean they're doing something illegal. It just means I don't think you're as into it as you say you are.
Yeah, well, Gary can explain.
So the next part, part three is what I put on last week. And this is linked to it on the website too, last week's. And this is all we need. Voter ID, citizen only voting, paper ballots, hand counts, paper poll books, not electronic vote for poll books, in-person voting, small local precincts, and one-day elections. And the last thing about Charlie Kirk, he's passing a baton on to us. And the basic starting point of rule of for and by the people is honest elections. We've got to start there. That's where everything starts. That's where the peace in the county starts from. Thank you.
Hello again, commissioners. When Mr. Dyer interviewed for his job, he emphasized being a mediator. But in both of his interviews, he also volunteered something unusual, that behind closed doors, he often relies on yelling at employees and even elected officials to get results. That was how, how he described his own management style. Since then, we've seen glimpses of that temper in public. I think we just saw it earlier this evening. In one meeting, he pounded the table and declared, quote, "The treasurer is not in charge of the budget, nor is the finance director. I am." Unquote. In another meeting of this, this very commission, he told a sitting commissioner that that commissioner had no authority to question him on how he was doing his job. And then I personally made a comment saying that was unacceptable and inappropriate to talk to his boss that way in public. If this is what happens on camera, what happens behind closed doors with his employees who serve at will? Especially when staff have quietly described feelings of being pressured or silenced, you have a grievance going on apparently, but are reluctant to speak for fear of losing jobs and benefits. And when that happens, this board should be concerned. The pattern here is hard to miss. A public image of reasonableness, reasonableness, but private intimidation, often directed at the women who work with him. We have claims of him being a bridge builder, yet boasting of screaming to control outcomes. He displays flashes of anger in public meetings, which raises concerns about his private behavior. This is not the leadership that Leland County deserves. And commissioners, you have both the duty and the authority to insist on a higher standard. That means holding the administrator, this administrator or any other, accountable for not just his public words, but for the climate that he creates behind closed, closed doors with his county employees. The people of Leland County and their government employees expect, respect, accountability, and trust, not intimidation disguised as leadership. Thank you.
You have a public comment?
Good evening. My name is Mickey Eater. I'm here with my wife, partner Carrie. We live in Empire Township. And it's a pretty surprising meeting and the content of it. And I'd like to go back a couple of months because the auditor was here. At least I think it was the auditor who said this county is the envy of every county in the state of Michigan. You have capital to take care of the emergencies that may arise. You're not charging an exorbitant amount of taxes. In other words, the capital is not growing beyond what is reasonable in terms of future needs. I hope as commissioners, you'll remember that you have a management responsibility as well as a leadership responsibility. It's an amazing place to live. And maintaining the programs that serve the population that address the challenges that our family members and our neighbors are confronted with in their lives. These are our responsibilities. And we need to think not only about scarcity. You're in a budget process right now, I imagine. I've been in literally hundreds of budget processes. You see numbers, but it's difficult to pay attention to what those numbers purchase and the goods and services that they provide and the way in which those programs improve the lives of our neighbors, our family members, our friends, but also make this a decent place to live. There was a discussion tonight about mental health services. There are not enough in this country. It's not a place to cut. We've had discussions about early childhood. There is a tremendous amount of evidence about the value of early childhood programs for the lifelong quality of life of individuals and also our community. So I wanted to just remind you, while all, there's a lot of chaos and a lot of things discussed this evening that I don't understand. But I did want to remind you that we have a tremendous county here and a tremendous place to live. And that hopefully we can figure out a way to cooperate with each other so that we don't mess it up. And I thank you for sitting in these seats and for helping develop programs and policies that make this a wonderful place to live. Thank you.
Not? Move on to commissioner comments. Any commissioner comments? Ross?
I thought chair vacancies had ended about six weeks ago. It seems like a lot of people in this room like to cheer up that with benefits. You know, I'm one of the few commissioners up here that can say I can talk to both sides. I go to your group, talk to you. I try to help you guys out. I go to the Dems, I try to help them out. You know, I hear from you guys back there that you want us to be transparent on our budget. You want us to slow things down. I listened to another commissioner at a meeting say, we should have a hiring freeze. I ran with it. I talked to you. You said run with it too. You're tired of us spending money. So I'm doing what you asked me to do, but then you come up here, you crucify our administrator. You crucify us board members up here when we're trying to do the right thing that you're asking. It is getting old. So I don't know what you want, Mr. White, or any of you. You know, we're trying to, you know, we're slowing this budget down. We've got a great chairperson here. He's doing budget different than we're used to. We've got administrator that's late.
Point of order. No, personal attacks.
So I'm just saying, you know, I'm confused. You know, if you want me to come and listen to you and then present your ideas here, then, you know, you can't be contradicting me either. So, I mean, I would want to make that motion. It's all, it's business sense. We're in the fourth quarter. If you're in a business in the fourth quarter, if you haven't spent the money, a lot of businesses, you keep it on hold. Oh, it's, this was just a pause. This wasn't a hiring freeze. It was a pause for 60 days. And if you read the motion, it says right in there, if any administrative head or elected official here, if they need that position, there was a channel for them to go through. There was due process here. But no one gave it a chance. I mean, I haven't heard from our financial person since I made that motion, but I've heard from other people in this business. There was a lot of politicking going on. As I call it, it's commissioner shopping. And it's got to end. This man said the whole mouthful here. We live in a great county, but in this room, we don't. We don't practice it. And we need to start.
I wanted to thank Mickey for the reminder and, and the comments. And also Dana, I read Dana's, the clerk sent it out to us a little bit earlier today. There's a message there, and I don't, I don't, we don't do these kind of resolutions here at this table. But I'm going to take that as a challenge for myself. This is a resolution. I'm going to try to do what, what Dana suggested we all do.
No, Mr. Auger?
I too would hope that we will focus on doing our job to improve the lives of people in this county and to use our tax dollar. Very competent, good administrator. That hiring freeze includes this statement. All you have to do is work with your administrator. That's it. It's not, I verify, we don't have to wait a month. That's very simple. I've never worked at a job where I didn't have to work with my boss. So I hope we can move on and not focus on division, but let's focus on the good of the county. I'm not sure what that does, but we've gone through too much of that in the last few years. It doesn't help anybody. It tears us down. Let's focus on building us up and working together, living in peace, and remembering our focus on serving all of you with your tax dollar to the best of our ability. I hope we can.
Do you have any commissioner comments? All right. Now, we want to approve of financials.
We're going to a closed session.
Yeah, we're going to a closed session.
Oh, I thought you wanted that after review of financials or approval of financials.
Man, I said review of financials.
Oh, I thought you wanted it after approval and everything. But it's not. I tried.
Well, we can, I can.
That's the case. You okay with that?
Yeah. Go ahead. What are we doing? So.
No, we're doing it.
Okay. Late, late claims to accounts for regular session. 261,626.07.
I make the motion that we approve claims and accounts for 261,626.7 cents.
Of course. It's a court of discussion. I'll favor the motion say aye. I'll post a name. Period seven zero.
I make the motion to approve post audit 6,197,261.70. For.
And support a discussion. Not, I'll favor the motion say aye. I'll post a name. Motion period seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. All right.
Right now, I make a motion that we're going to a closed session. We have the clerk, the administrator with us to discuss. Yeah, contract. To discuss labor negotiations. And I would second it.
I want to make sure, I just brought one to my house together, that we're moving according to 15.2681 currency. And who said the following individuals to be moved are administrator and who would be moved by yourself. Is that what your motion is?
Yes. I think we ought to amend that because Jen is a part of the team and I think we are. Sharon, we're in also. Yeah. Now, that would be very relevant today.
That was, I thought if you seconded that, you know.
Got it.
So we're going to approve.
You did. Excellent. Are you okay with that?
Sure.
And I will do. I'm sorry, are we ready for all of these?
No, no.
Okay. So Commissioner Bunny?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins? Is he going to?
He took, he went to the restaurant, so.
So Commissioner Walter?
Yes.
Commissioner Wessel? Chairman Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Auger?
Yes.
Okay. That'll be six zero. I'm going to just take a recess for a second while we get to it.
Yeah, let's just. No bathroom thing sounds good.
I'm going to just take a recess for a second.
Yeah, let's just.
No, bathroom thing sounds good.
I'm going to try to approve of financials.